Happy New Year.
Your mic.
No.
Hit the button.
It's not on.
Again, I'm Mayor of Winston-Salem, Allen Joins. It's my honor to call and order this January 8th meeting and wish everyone a Happy New Year as we begin another year of service to the citizens of Winston-Salem. May I have the City Clerk call the roll, please?
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Mundy.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the City Council with me in a moment of silence? Thank you. And would you please join the City Council with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I want to recognize our Sergeant-at-Arms tonight, who is Lieutenant Joseph Best. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. Saw him earlier today. We will proceed with the first item of business is the City Manager's update.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. A few things I just wanted to pass on today. Many of you, actually, I think all of you, were there for our Employee Excellence Awards, but I just wanted to recognize by name those employees that were recognized in December at our Excellence Awards. That was Jeremy Graham, who got our Core Values Award, Karen Witherspoon, our Leadership Award, Andrew Greis got the Constant Service Award, Amy Harris got the WOW Award, Hunter Starzak got a Team Player Award, Darnell Simmons got the Rising Star Award, and Yolanda Price got the Outstanding Supervisor Award. I know you know probably many of those employees, so when you see them, congratulate them for the great work they did and our HR and Marketing and Communications Team for putting on a great awards program for us. And you can also watch it on the YouTube channel, I'm told, if you wanted to see it, relive it again. In terms of a couple of other things that are going on, I just wanted you to know that the City employees will be participating in our city's 9th Annual Martin Luther King Jr. Helping Hands Day this Friday, January 12th. So they'll be out working with various nonprofits, doing some particular efforts to help in the community and being led by our HR, Human Relations, and our DEI program that are organizing these efforts. For our Business Inclusion and Advancement Department has launched a new contract compliance management program and vendor listing services that allows vendors to register electronically. So we encourage all of our local businesses to sign up for that program so that we know what services you would like to provide and can match you up when we have programs that would work towards those ends. And then just a couple of other successes that we've had. If you didn't see these, the City's Choice Neighborhood Initiative was featured in the HUD newsletter this past month as Phase 1 of the project has been completed. So that's a great accomplishment for the city. Our City Public Arts Program was featured on livability.com and in the Greater Winston-Salem Industry and Community Insights Magazine. And so that was led by our Marketing Communications and the Planning and Development Services Team to get that out there, great public art that we have in our community. And just so you also know, we're going to be launching a citywide employee newsletter starting this month to help our employees know all the good things that are going on and recognize each other when they're doing great things. And so with that, I'll stand ready if there are any questions or to allow you to keep on with the agenda. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Page. Any questions? Mr. Page, it's great recognition. Thank you very much. Tonight's agenda of the City Council is comprised of two parts, the General Agenda and the Consent Agenda, and it's always the practice of this council to take the Consent Agenda as the first item of business. Items on this agenda have been unanimously recommended by a committee of the City Council or are being submitted in accordance with established city procedure. There'll be no discussion of the items on this agenda unless a council member so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered individually. Any items that are not removed from the Consent Agenda will be enacted by one motion by the City Council. Councilmembers, are there any items you want to have pull from the Consent Agenda?
C5.
C5.
C9, please.
Is there a motion for the balance?
Move for approval of the balance for the Consent Agenda.
Second.
A motion by Councilmember Mayor Protem Adams and Councilmember Mundy. Any discussion? All in favor of that, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Mine didn't come up, but I'm a yes.
We're having a little problems earlier with the whisper. All right. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting aye. Oh, here, we're up now. So it's unanimous. Thank you. All right.
AI voted for me. I never saw it.
Item C9, please.
Covering your butt again, aren't they?
C5.
C5.
Item C5, resolution authorizing funding for a white flag shelter with City of Dwellings, a community-first initiative for $40,000.
Councilmember Mayor Protem Adams asked for this item. Do you want a little presentation?
Yes, thank you. Over the past week or whatever, temperatures have dropped. Inclement weather is scheduled to start about 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock this morning, in the morning. Supposed to get really cold after the rain comes through. It's 60 degrees tomorrow. But what I want to ask you about are the perceptions of the current services that are offered by the White Flag Shelter and the organization, whether it's City of Dwellings or anybody else, the perception of the current services, level of services, and when it comes to citizens wanting to distribute resources to individuals at these particular shelters, can you comment on that?
So right now, the resources that are available within the white flag room, we do have a white flag shelter at City with Dwellings. It also has an overflow component in case that those beds of 40 are full. We also have family beds that we utilize as well. As far as giving out resources, if there are resources that can be given out, we do ask that they contact our coordinated intake center line or City with Dwellings and get information to families or individuals in that manner.
Have we discussed a policy with City of Dwellings and others? Because I did get communications, and I'm sure maybe you did too, about individuals, as we all know, that want to contribute to the resources of individuals that are indigent or homeless. And they were basically saying that they were responded to somewhat negatively and that I was wondering, where is our part to play in this to help the agencies and/or the citizens understand what is it that we do and what we don't do and what we ask or if they want to do? Because right now, there seems to be, to me, a miscommunication, and it goes back to us not communicating well either with the agencies or us following up with the agencies when we receive communications of this nature to investigate what happened and how we can be of service without everybody falling out about it.
So there was a call about individuals giving out donations at the City with Dwellings property. And what happens is, when that happened, there was a lot of things left behind, which City with Dwellings did have, they had to discard those things that were left behind and clean up those remaining items. Also, there was items that were just, people may have took and left. So they were upset and they did call the city asking about ways to better inform people on how to give. So rather than giving out tents and blankets, which usually are left behind, volunteering or coming to City with Dwellings to give things directly to the organization that can be better used, maybe given out in the shelter or things that way. Next month in February, we are bringing an item forth to City Council about various homeless services that are available, discussing our funding, what we have done since this 2023 year, and what we plan on doing moving forward.
And I just want you to know, your department and you guys, your team have done a tremendous job. But I also think that, and we're probably going to talk about this later, that we need to have this housing summit, City Manager. And at first, I thought it would be a one-day summit. It needs to be at least two-day summit, one on homelessness and one on housing. Because as I've said, and many of you on staff have heard and some of you in the community, we all don't know what each other knows about the different areas that we have expertise in, the different areas that we want to be able to provide services of volunteerism, or even basically the education and knowledge of what homelessness entails by letting our stakeholders and clients and others who are recipients of it to understand what we do, what we don't do, what other agencies do, what's our connection, and how this looks so far as the perception of citizens of what we have going on in Winston. They think it's an anomaly, but it's not. It's going on all over the country, but particularly in the triad in Greensboro, High Point, and Winston-Salem. I'd like to see the City Manager discuss this with staff. We did try to do one last year, but in between everything that was going on, I thought it would be better if we waited to this year to get it under. But even the one on housing, the developers, the realtors, builders, nonprofits, all of us, people that need housing, need to be able to come to the table and all of us have a very transparent conversation about what we know, how we know it, what are we doing, how do we address it? And maybe we go after some one or two low-hanging fruit, and then we could probably prioritize one or two other things that we all can work on together to further the initiative, whether it's to help diminish homelessness or eliminate it, or whether what we do as a city, all of us, what we do to promote housing in this community, that everybody understands what it takes to do housing and what it takes to facilitate a homeless program. But thank you very much. And again, I would ask that you follow up with City of Dwellings to see what they're doing to communicate to the resources that are being provided by citizens, how we can make that better as customer, internal, external, and clients. Thank you. I move for approval, Mayor.
You move approval of item C5?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Taylor. Any discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
I'm not getting it.
I'm not getting it either.
John's not getting it.
All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
AI, baby.
AI, yeah.
Aye, thank you.
It reads my mind and votes.
Item C9, please.
Item C9, consideration of items regarding the agreement with the North Carolina Department of Transportation for the Jonestown Road Sidewalk Project located in the Southwest Ward.
Councilmember Mundy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. King, I'd like to just make sure that the public knows, since we have a bigger audience now, that this is in the works. This is good news. But I also would like for you to clarify on the map where we will not have sidewalk going over 421.
That's right. So, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and Councilmembers. So Councilmember Mundy, you're right. So this project would install sidewalk on both sides of Jonestown from Country Club back down to Salem Parkway. And as you know, that bridge on Jonestown over Salem Parkway there is tight already. And so there's not accommodations, there's not enough width right now to get a sidewalk on that bridge to carry pedestrians over. I think staff's position is at some point, when that bridge comes up for replacement, that's a time to have a conversation about NC DOT to make sure provisions are built in there to carry pedestrians across that bridge.
We've got pedestrians, bicyclists, motorized wheelchairs, so that second part is very important once we can get DOT moving on that.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve, seconded by Mayor Protem Adams. Any discussion? All those in favor, I'm afraid to ask.
Well, do a voice. Do a voice for it, please.
All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. That's unanimous. Thank you. So now we'll go to the General Agenda, which is comprised of the following items. There's a public hearing on a street closure, as well as one on a zoning petition, and one on a local historic landmark designation. There's an item related to a pedicab or rickshaw devices, a resolution authorizing the conveyance of city-owned property, and a resolution related to the Brushy Forks Dream Bank restoration. When each of these public hearings are called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the City Council will consider the item. If there is opposition to a public hearing item, which is not the zoning item, basically, the proponents and the opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing again and the City Council will consider the item. The meeting is being televised live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed again tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday night at 9:00 p.m. Copies of our agendas, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online at the city's website.
They can't hear you, Mr. Mayor.
You're on. I'm on.
It all sounds muffled. Everybody's...
Yeah, that's a little something going on there. So our meetings, as previous meetings, are all available online and clicking on our Watch Meetings Online option. Councilmembers, before we get into the agenda, Councilmember Mundy would like to make a motion to carry over an item. Councilmember Mundy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to move that we carry over G4, the ordinance to regulate the use of pedicab and rickshaw devices in the City of Winston-Salem. Due to some later information that we have, we want to connect a good resource with DOT, and that will give them time to make that connection. So I move that we hold G4.
Second.
Until the next meeting?
Until the next meeting or as soon as DOT has had an opportunity to make that connection and have that conversation.
Mr. Abrams?
In order to continue the item, you must continue it to a date certain. So you would still have the freedom to keep...
Let me get some advice on what date we should use?
If we could go, let's go to the second meeting in February. If we could do that, that gives, I think, staff enough time to review this, the comments we received, meet with the stakeholders, and come back informed for that second. So I don't know what date that is, but I think we could do the second February council meeting.
I believe that's the 19th of it.
So I move to hold G4 until our February 19th meeting.
Second.
All right. Motion by Councilmember Mundy, seconded by Councilmember Taylor, to hold this item to February the 9th?
19th.
19th, thank you.
All in favor of that motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no.
Yes.
Aye. Yes.
Okay, we're good. Thank you. So now we'll continue on with item G1.
Item G1, public hearing on a petition to close and abandon a portion of Millennium Drive and notice to all persons interested in the closing thereof. Located on the southeast ward, petition by Robert A. Team Jr., authorized agent for UCIC Development Company LLC.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard on this proposed closing? If not, we'll go then to Councilmember Taylor, your ward.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of the council, I move for approval of item G1.
Second.
Motion and second to approve item G1. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. And item G2?
Item G2, public hearing on zoning petition of City of Winston-Salem W-3605 from LI and RS9 to RM18L. Properties located on the north side of Motor Road between Old Walker Town Road and Circle Drive, containing approximately 31.62 acres. Located in the northeast ward, planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, so we will not have a presentation, and I would recognize Councilmember Burke.
Thank you, Mayor. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, W-3605. Thank you.
Thank you, second by Mayor Protem Adams. Any further discussion on this item? If not all in favor of the item, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, no. And that is unanimous. Thank you. Item G3?
Item G3, public hearing on ordinance designating certain property as a local historic landmark, the Peter Fetter House located in the south ward.
In this particular case, the Historic Resources Commission is recommending denial. So I'll ask Ms. McCullough, if you would, to run through the recommendation from the local historic commission.
Mayor Joins, Mayor Protem Adams, council members, good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here this evening. Tonight, we're going to look at the designation of local historic landmark for the Peter Fetter House at 319 South Main Street. The designation request is for the entire exterior, interior, and site that the buildings are located on. Here's a map showing that location. It is within the Old Salem Historic District. As been stated to you before, when we brought landmarks before you, the process for designation of a local historic landmark is that the application materials and the property itself meets two criteria, special local significance and integrity. The next step is that we have to submit the application and report to the State Historic Preservation Office for their comments. It goes before the Historic Resource Commission for their recommendation to the elected body. It then goes to the appropriate elected body. And if designated, the ordinance that is created is sent to the tax office to determine what that tax deferral is. This is that type of designation, that the designation, the portion of the designation gets a property tax of up to 50% on that designation. The property will get mapped, and then at that time, also, design review begins with the Historic Resource Commission. So again, it's the carrot and stick program. The application in the report stated that it did meet those two criteria, special significance and integrity. Under special significance, what was specially significant about it is that it had been in Old Salem since 1840, its original construction date. However, in 1920s, it was modified into a duplex. It was a conversion-type duplex. And they stated that the special significance arrived from it being one of the remaining duplexes in Winston-Salem from the 1920s. It also held special significance because it was one of the remaining properties that wasn't restored in the 1950s review or rehabilitation of Old Salem. So it was one of the ones left at that standing. This property in the report was sent to the State Historic Preservation Office. We received comments on September 20th of 2023. What the state typically says is that they felt that the report provided the preservation commission and the local governing sufficient information to determine whether the property possesses the requisite special local significance and integrity for designation. On November 1st, 2023, the Historic Resource Commission held a public hearing. The applicant was there to speak. On that, at that meeting, the Historic Resource Commission found unanimously that the Peter Fetter House did not hold special local significance because of the following reasons. The application lacked evidence that this is one of the only remaining conversion duplexes left in Winston-Salem. And furthermore, in 2017, a kitchen renovation brought the two units back together. Also, considering the mission of Old Salem Incorporated in the local historic district is still to retain, to maintain and encourage restoration of buildings to the 1766-1856 period of significance, designation of a property as a local historic landmark that does not meet this goal would contradict the missions of both programs and not create special significance. As such, the Historic Resource Commission does not recommend that the Winston-Salem City Council designate as a local historic landmark the Peter Fetter House. You have three potential motions that set out in our state-enabling legislation. You can designate the portions that were proposed in the application and report. You can designate other portions, just the exterior, just the interior, things like that, or you can deny the entire application. Just so you can get some visuals, on your left, you're looking at an 1895 sandborne map that shows when it was originally created, that before it was rehabbed into a duplex. And then on the right, you see a current area with a duplex. Here's what the property looks like today. And I can answer any questions for you if you have any.
Any questions, Ms. McCullough? Any sort of question? Councilmember Cipio?
The reason it is not significant, if I understand, is because it was converted to a duplex.
So the 1840 structure that originally was constructed was a single-family home, was a, you know, and it was converted in the 20s. In the report, though, they made a case for that the 1920 duplex is significant. However, in 2017, it was converted, the duplex was taken apart because the kitchen was renovated into one space, making it one unit again.
So it's no longer duplex?
Correct. So the interior cannot be specially significant as a duplex if it's not a duplex.
And the exterior cannot be considered?
Yes. So that's why I stated, there are three motions you can make. You can consider the application as it stands, which is requesting the entire exterior, interior and site, or you can find, we just find that the exterior and the site are significant, hold that special significance.
And did the state find it to be significant exteriorly?
So they don't give a comment to state that they feel it meets the criteria. They just state that they feel you've got a report that was written well enough that you can make that determination. It's very helpful.
Mayor Protem?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. McCullough. I just think it's interesting that Old Salem and some other people, again, determine what's historical and what's not. And I got it. It's part of protocol, procedures, ordinance, zoning, I got it. But, you know, I think most of us that have even traveled Old Salem or the Main Street, you see this house, and... you see this house, and I, for me personally, I think, and I don't know what else we can do besides what you've given us, that we normally have to follow certain rules when it comes to public hearings of any kind. So I just want to let you know I appreciate the backstory and the information that was included in this G3 item.
Councilmember McIntosh?
So the Sanborn map that shows the outline of the house doesn't, to my untrained eye, doesn't appear to meet up with the way that mass structure looks today.
Correct. So when they made it into a duplex, they removed a lot of original features, and the application held that, you know, stated all of that.
And they added the side porches.
Exactly.
Mirror imaged it.
Exactly. There are a lot of original fabrics still in the house, you know, the floors and things like that. However, wanting our landmark program to hold special local significance, we want to make sure we're designating the best of the best and the best examples of that. And yes, it's in Old Salem, and I agree. I don't want to lose this building. I don't, you know, we don't want to, however, and I don't think we will, but does it meet that level that we want to designate? I think that's where the commission was thinking about that, that the changes made so much, just didn't rise to that.
Any other comments, questions from Ms. McCullough? John?
I'd like to make a comment and also like to make a nomination if the board's ready to receive that.
Let's just do the public hearing, and I'll come right back to you. So, Ms. McCullough, anything else? Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed nomination? Yes, sir, if you would, give us your name and address.
I live in this house right now, grew up in Winston-Salem, and moved back here in 2019. And I would just encourage you to kind of keep an open mind during your evaluation process because the house, the 1920 duplexing of the house actually highlights and still emphasizes a lot of the primary architectural, cultural, and historical elements of the original structure from the 1800s and its Meravian heritage. It's part of the fabric of Old Salem, and it always will be. And if anything, the duplexing really kind of contributed to a sense of continuity at the time of 1920 between Old Salem and Winston-Salem, and it met the contemporary needs of the growth of the city at the time. And the only other point I want to make is that it's a little misleading because the house really is a duplex as opposed to a single-family home. The 2017 renovation basically provided access to the kitchen to one side as opposed to the other, and there are two doors on the north side that can be opened in the dining room to provide access to the rest of the house, but those doors are lockable, and the house is used as a duplex. There are two separate heating bills, natural gas bills, and electricity bills for each side of the house. Basically, you kind of need to think of a locking door between a hotel suite, and those are still considered two separate hotel rooms, and that's kind of a good analogy for the Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else like to be heard on this proposed designation? All right, I declare the public hearing closed. I'd recognize Councilmember Larson, if she would like to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members. This house was long recognized by Old Salem as being a historic structure in the sense that it was like so many houses and went in Old Salem and undergone a lot of changes over the years, but the core value of that house potentially to add to the historic district was buried underneath all of the changes that had occurred. As we look through the time of how these things have occurred, the fact that it's a duplex doesn't really add to the value of the house as a contributing structure to the Old Salem Historic District. The historic district is defined very clearly by the dates and by the Meravian experience that occurs on that site. So in its current conditions, if this house were coming forward as a restored structure, which is a number of photographs, mappings, and drawings, and a variety of informations available to allow a restoration of that house to its 1840s appearance, I think the commission would be favorable in having it designated. But as it is, it does not contribute as its current condition, even though we know that it has the potential of one day being restored, and I think that's our hope, to see that happen. It's an interesting house, and I value it like everybody else does. I'd hate to see it go away because I know that buried in there is still a good story. But not in its current condition does not add to the historic district, and therefore I would move that we deny item number CG3 as submitted.
Motion to deny the request. Second. Second by Councilmember McIntosh. Any further discussion? Councilmember Monday?
Question is, if we deny this now, would the owners or future owners have an opportunity to engage in what Councilman Larson suggested? Is this a once-know, always-know, or is there an opportunity in the future?
There would be an opportunity in the future to bring it back.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Mayor Protem Adams?
Ms. McCullough, you presented us with three options, basically, right? And could you restate those, please? If you can.
Yep. Designation of the portion of the property as proposed, so that would be as the application in the report submitted. Designation of a portion of the proposed designation, for example, designation of the exterior of the building only. So you could do, we would, instead of agreeing with what the applicant wanted, we want to do just the exterior and the site. We did that with the Wachovia Building, the first Wachovia Building. Or deny the entire designation.
I would like to offer substitute.
Substitute motion, sure.
That we designate the exterior portion of the house.
The substitute motion to designate the exterior of the house as a local historic structure. Is there a second to this motion?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Burke. Any discussion on the substitute motion? Councilmember Sipia?
I do have a question. If we designate just the exterior, does that qualify it for the tax credit for the entire house?
No. So the tax deferral, what will happen is the ordinance will go before. That will state that tonight you designated just the exterior and the site, is what I would suggest, and that the tax assessor's office then determines, they give 50% of that designated portion. So they look, and what they basically do is what's the square footage of each exterior facade? So they don't get the deferral for the interior of the building. The 1966 Wachovia Building is similar to this because it's only the exterior and the lobby. So they get, instead of a 50% tax deferral, it's roughly a 10.25%. So it's less, but they, that's the way our tax assessor interprets that or that state enabling legislation.
I have one more question about the exterior. It looked like it had very modern siding, and the replacement windows look like replacement windows with current materials, but are they similar to the original exterior? Or are we just saying it's historic because of its location, the site where it sits?
The windows, the material is actually not a fake. It's wood siding, and the windows are probably dating back. The ones in the rear, there have been some replacements, but the ones in the front, I would have to look at my date. I don't want to give you a wrong date. This house is under design review already because of being in Old Salem. So the exterior already has to get what we call COAs, you know, the certificates of appropriateness for all the work. So that work, if it was done after designation, it would have been reviewed by the Historic Resource Commission.
Thank you.
Questions? Mr. Attorney, you had your question.
I just had one question for clarification. Your motion indicated the exterior of the house, and just so everyone is clear, do you mean just literally the exterior of the structure or the exterior encompassing the exterior of the structure and the site?
Meaning the site that it sits upon. So we would look at the yard, you know, things like that. Because it backs into God's Acre, and that's the historic portion of it, too.
Whatever Ms. McCullough says.
Thank you, Ms. Contos.
I have another question.
Let me go to John, you're just real quick. Councilmember Larson?
Let me pick up on Councilmember Adams's comments. I think there's justification certainly for the site to be designated. We know there are outbuildings you saw from the insurance maps, that there's probably an archaeological site there on the site as well, and it certainly contains historical evidences, valuable to Old Salem's experience. I think also the core building, as you see it there, that is the two-end chimneys and the basic building, which also shows up in the Sanborn maps, is an appropriate 1840s building buried in that, in that core. I think what my problem I'm having with it is that the additions to the rear, which are substantial to this project, to this building, fall outside of the period of significance for Old Salem and fall outside the period of significance for national landmark designation. So it's questionable as to whether or not it would hold up under those kinds of criteria of scrutiny. And I would suggest that if we're going to designate something, we designate the core 1840 building, which is what shows up on the Sanborn map, and then the lot itself, which is intact and complete and has good potential for historical and architectural recovery.
Ms. McCullough, so with this designation, if it's approved, the one of the exterior, does the owners have an opportunity to come back for any other designations at all for the house if this, the exterior, is approved?
So at this time, what you're stating is if you designate the exterior, is that you believe that the exterior does hold special significance following the report that was made for the duplex and that sort of thing? I think, like Councilperson Larson suggested, that if they want to take it back to the 1840s, let's say, and then, so then the whole interior and such could then be, or if they would really create the duplexing again, they can always make a new report and create an, you know, bring it forward and go through that application process.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember McIntosh?
Michelle, what's the period of significance in Old Salem, and what's the latest date?
1756 to 1866.
Okay, and the timeframe in which this was converted to a duplex?
1920.
Okay, so it's a 1920s structure, essentially, in a setting that has a cutoff date prior to that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we do have a motion and a second, substitute motion to designate the exterior part of the house along with the site itself, which could include buildings and other things of that nature. Everybody understand the motion? All those in favor of the substitute motion?
The substitute motion is not what's showing on our screen.
Well, we'll just vote the substitute motion as presented. My screen's not working. Children.
Excuse us. Excuse us.
All those in favor of the substitute motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed to the substitute? One, two, three. The motion passes five to three for designation of the exterior. All right. Thank you very much. So now we'll move to, we've already done item G4. Let's run to item G5, please.
Item G5, resolution authorizing the conveyance of certain city-owned property in support of the city's affordable housing objectives located in the northwest ward.
Thank you. I'd like to start off by asking our deputy city attorney, Ms. Contos, to give us a little summary of where we're at with this.
Sure, I'd be glad to. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of council. For your consideration, tonight is an offer that the city received on a property at 800 North Spring Street. The sales price offered is $600,000, subject to the condition that the buyers adhere to Session Law 2021-44, which is based on the provisions of the city's Affordable Housing Ordinance and the Housing Justice Act. The prospective buyers have also agreed to keep the rents at the same rate for the current tenants through the year 2025, and to meet with each tenant prior to the completion of the 30-day due diligence period to develop a long-term occupancy plan. Staff is available to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
So the affordable or current rates would be in effect to the end of 2025, and the buyer would agree to meet with the current owner, occupants of the apartments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Mr. McIntosh?
Could I get staff to talk to us about what the, give us a sort of summation of what efforts were made in terms of outreach to the existing tenants?
Good evening, Mayor Johns, Mayor Protem Adams, and members of the council. Chantel McLam, Neighborhood Services Director. I did go out to this location, located 800 North Spring Street, back in November. We had very short notice that the sale was going to take place, and so I actually took letters out there, and I was able to speak with five of the eight tenants that were home. I did communicate to them that the city was intervening and to ensure that this property remained affordable. However, we were going to sell it because the city did not own apartments, but the new buyer would be required to keep the units affordable. They were aware at the time that their rent would remain the same. At the time, I only knew that it would be through their lease, and so that's what I communicated. We found out later that it would be through 2024.
And now 25.
And now 25, yes.
Other questions, Jeff? Councilmember Clark?
At the last meeting we had this, the prospective buyer did mention he was working with Halls to get Section 8 vouchers for the residents, and I think that's why he's only gone through 25. He hopes to be able to get those which would have a significant benefit to the renters.
It would, but it's not guaranteed, but he is making efforts to work with Halls for that to happen.
Councilmember Sipia?
This may not be for you. This is just a question for our legal and staff, if we know this. When we talk about properties being affordable, given this scenario, what would be the rental increase over time for anyone in these apartments? I think sometimes people think affordable means my rent will never change. That is not the case. Rents will go up, but in this particular situation, how high could the rents go over, I think it's a 30-year restriction? And how fast would it go up? Do we have an idea on any of that?
That's inflation.
Sounds like we might need to do a little.
The potential buyer is here, if we wanted to ask him to speak.
Okay.
Would be appropriate.
I don't know who could speak to her, but I think that's something to.
The potential buyer is here. He may be able to speak to.
If you give your name and address for the record, please.
Jared Rogers, 166 Lindbrook Drive, Winston-Salem, 27106. So basically, you know, we can't predict where the rents are, but I can tell you what your qualifications and now allow you to do. A family of four at 80% AMI could pay $1,600 for one of these units today. So, and they're paying five, I think the rents right now are 580 to 675. So to me, just move, if we get to Section 8, well, they're only paying 30% AMI. Some of these tenants might actually see their monthly expense go down because they're paying more than 30% AMI today. So, but our plan is not to go in and put $1,600 rents on this thing. That is not. Our plan is to keep it as low as we can for it to sustain itself. That's it.
Can I answer your question, Councilmember?
Well, I can speak generally. I can't give you the figures, but our Affordable Housing Ordinance. Housing Ordinance requires that 65% of the units be set aside for affordable housing purposes. And of those, 20% of the units shall be set aside for eligible households with incomes at 30% and below of the area median income. 35% of the units need to be set aside for eligible households with incomes of 31% to 50% of the area median income. And then 50% of the units, of the remaining units, shall be set aside for eligible households with incomes at 51% to 80% of the area median income. And then the remaining, that figure is a 65%. So then the remaining 35% of the units may be occupied or leased to persons meeting income requirements for either workforce housing, market rate housing, or a combination of the two.
And I skipped over the last one because the 80%, I assume the 80% AMI prevails. The 35% that could be 80 to 120, I skipped over because the 30, 80% AMI is a prevailing restriction on, as I understand, for the deed.
So what I hear you saying is that there is flexibility right now that you could actually go up, but you're not. You're holding it at the level.
I'm saying under that, you could actually.
Under that.
Under that, you could actually go higher.
Right.
35% of units, but I'm not assuming.
You're not going to do that.
Correct. Well, no, I'm assuming 80 is my cap.
Okay.
Under that, under those restrictions.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilwoman McIntosh. Can you just talk, I mean, there is no guarantee on, on Section 8 vouchers, but can you just generalize your conversations with the housing authority and what your outlook is and you think the probability of that is?
I've talked to Kevin Treshire a couple of times on the conversation. He says they think the rolls will be, he's pretty confident they'll be open within the next 12 months. So my first assumption was seeing is who was already on the waiting list? There is nobody in the complex right now on the waiting list. There's two units at the complex that are Section 8. So that leaves six units that are not on the, on any form of the voucher. So then we need the, we needed to open up to accept new applicants. He has said he's very confident they'll get open in the next 12 months. He just can't tell me when. We assumed if we held rents for, through 2024, that would give us a window of time for them to open up and us figure out how we're going to shuffle people around.
Follow-up question. Am I correct in saying that if, if all eight units are eligible and actually do receive vouchers, you'll make more money and the tenants will pay less?
Yeah, well, tenants could pay less depending on what their AMI is, correct? And we will not have to feed the thing. I mean, right now, it's, it's basically a 3% cash on cash. Loan constant is 10%, you know, that's, we have to set up pretty sizable reserve just to keep it going.
So it's in your best interest to press for those vouchers, which again goes back to that will financially be in the tenants' best interest for those to go through?
Right. We plan, we have a very healthy repair and maintenance reserve. We have an ongoing reserve that will reserve annually to upkeep the units. These were built in 1970, early 70s, so they, or even earlier than that, they're gonna need maintenance.
Excuse me. We know we're outburst into the. Go ahead, sir.
So we know they're gonna need maintenance. So we can't, we can't just bare bones it, skin and bones it.
All right. Any other questions? Councilwoman Monday?
I just want to clarify that I'm remembering correctly. Are you a member of the board of City With Dwellings?
Correct. That's how I got involved. I first looked at it as buying it with City With Dwellings. If it was a one-bed, if it were one-bedroom or studios, we'd have been all over it. But right now.
So you're not considering making this a part of a nonprofit?
No, we're planning to, is to own, operate it for three to five years. You know, City With Dwellings knows if this ever becomes something they want, we will gladly let them step in and take over.
Thank you.
Due its proximity to their office. It's right down the street. And it, you know, if they ever see the need for two-bedroom units, we feel like it would be a great option for them.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Burke?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I just have a couple of questions. Again, just for clarification, there are no guarantees when it comes to Section 8 vouchers. So that is something that may not happen. So let's just move along as if that is something that will not happen after holding the rents until 2024. What would the affordable rates be for the current tenants?
So my understanding is they've opened up the rolls every three years for the last 10 years. So if they haven't opened up in two, my assumption is over the next two, we should have a great opportunity. Now that we've held rents for 2025, we should have a great opportunity for that. I can't guarantee that we can operate at $570 rents when you pay $60,000 for a unit with all the operating costs associated with it.
Okay, so you're, you're not able to give us what the rates would be if?
No, I can't. I mean, it's hard to predict where my property taxes will be, where my insurance will be in two years. I mean, North Carolina just announced a 42% increase for insurance. So to the legislators, I can't predict where my expenses will be. So I can't predict where I'll need to be even to break even.
And we can't predict anything about the Section 8 vouchers. And if the opportunity does open up before the 2024 years with the leases, there's no guarantee that the individuals who may apply would even qualify. And how long does that process take?
If they don't qualify because they make too much?
This is not my line of work.
Okay.
Okay, so I said, what if they don't? Yeah.
We just kind of, I can, we'll just have to tackle that bridge when it comes.
So they could possibly be displaced?
I've never displaced anybody in any rental loss I've bought.
If they're not able to afford the payment, then?
Well, the difference is I've been able, some of the places I've been able to buy where I don't have to feed it and keep the rents low, this price is, this price is a challenging price for the rents that are in place. We can work with City With Dwellings to help. There's other groups that can help. I know last time I was here, you approved an ordinance that helps with people who can't afford to pay rent. If we have to, that's not my plan. But I'm not going to lie to you and say this is, this is a, I mean, it's not even a skinny deal. Let's a negative deal today. That could be a skinny deal on Section 8.
Okay, and the other question that I ask, and I don't know if you have the answer, how long does the process take to apply for a Section 8? How long does that process take from beginning to end? Do you have any idea?
I don't know. My expertise on that, on the landlord's side, is they typically, new applications fill up in about two weeks, and it's taken them about three years to run through the number of applicants they get every, when they do open up the rolls.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, thank you for.
Thank you.
And in fairness, I want to point out that we did receive, or the city manager did receive some petitions and from today, I believe it was Mr. Rose with 130 signatures or so.
Mayor, it was, it was the eight residents of the property that signed the petition.
Oh, just eight residents?
Eight residents of the property.
And they, according to that, are opposed to the sales, correct?
That is correct. That's what the petition says. Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Thank you. I just wanted to acknowledge that, Mr. Rose, for, for the record. All right, thank you for qualifying that.
Excuse me. My question to staff and maybe Ms. Condos. In our affordable housing policy, I know it is that we sell the property and it has restrictions for 30 years if it's a rental property. Are there restrictions on the resale of that property? If we sell it to someone and they decide to sell it, do those restrictions go along with the property for 30 years or until the 30 years has been met?
Yes, they stay in place for 30 years.
So.
In the event of a resale.
All right, in the resale.
Regardless of ownership.
Yeah, they run with it. I'm going to recognize Mayor Protim Adams, this came out of her committee unanimously. If she's ready for a motion.
Mayor, members of the council, I move for approval of item G five.
Second. Motion second.
Comment.
And go ahead, Mayor Protim.
Again, I'm going to bring up the housing summit. Housing, probably what, 14, 10 years ago, Councilwoman Clark, when I got on the council, Councilwoman Taylor, nobody was talking about housing. The thing that we were talking about was the fact that we had a, hundreds of houses that were blighted and we weren't really following through to get them taken care of or preserved or repaired. And now, fast forward, with the housing crash of eight, nine, 10, which now that takes us back to about 10 years ago, that's when housing became a hot-button issue. And when municipalities, state, the Fed, developers, nonprofits, everybody realized that this was going to be hard for everybody. That's why I am proposing a housing summit. Because right now, we got, all of us are passionate, but we're fighting each other over probably some things that if we just talked about it, we probably could get some resolution or strategy, strategy that we could all live with. Everybody's not going to be happy. Again, my saying, this isn't Burger King. But the name of the game is to make sure that the people who are affected or need or want, that their needs are addressed first. But we all got to get on the page of what does it take to do this? I know the city has had a lot of studies done, and I know a lot of people think, why did we do that? But right now, other cities are benchmarking and reviewing our studies. And our studies by the school of government are the best in the state, if not the country, right now. We may not have been able to implement everything that we want, but it's a study to help us with the strategy. I believe, again, that the first thing that was talked about when I started going to these housing summits and conferences as far back as 10 years ago, preservation of affordable housing is the number one priority. If a municipality or state or county owns property that is right now affordable, we should be trying to save it as best we can. Because there are units that's rolling off that we won't be able to save, that are going into the private market. This is America. It's a democracy. Capitalism, much as we hate it. People that buy the property have a right to do what they want unless a municipality, a county or a state, or the feds come in and give us, help us, private developers, businesses, the hospitals, the banks, everybody. That goes back to the summit of Mr. Pate, that it's a known fact from the League of Cities that if we don't get together with stakeholders and all of us working together to put something in the plate, we'll never get there. We won't even be able to chisel away at it. So again, what I'm saying is, if you have not read the studies from Grounded Solution and Everyone's Home and the other organizational structures we've done, studies, please do. Because prioritizing the preservation of already units, we have to do what we can to keep them. We have to do what we can so that we have a say in what happens to them. But that does not necessarily mean in 30 years, those, those units won't go private market. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Clark, kind of?
Yeah, just real quick. I think we're forgetting some of the history here. This was owned by ESR, Experiment Airlines. They had to sell it because they're having financial problems.
And they needed the cash.
We were not the low bidder by any means. But the other bidders were probably going to take these to market rate. They agreed to sell to us because we agreed to keep them affordable and we were really willing to close quickly, meaning we had the money in the bank. We could write them a check. The motion that passed this council included the requirement that we resell the property. There's not a question of whether or not it's going to be sold. It's who we're going to sell it to. Because that was a condition to buy it. That was in the motion. And the only condition in there is that the person had to keep it affordable. Well, it's been mentioned. The definition of affordable can be pretty broad and numbers can be a little higher than what we may think they are. But we have found a person to buy it who not only agrees to keep it affordable, he agreed to keep the rents fixed for two years to the end of 2025, and he's agreed to work with the housing authority. He's already been in contact with them. I don't think you're going to find anyone else who's going to buy this and bring as much to the table as he does. He's also a member of the City of Dwellings Board of Directors, and he would sell to them tomorrow if they wanted it. They're not looking for, as I said, two bedrooms. But the city, I think, has done an excellent job of finding the right buyer. One, we've helped ESR out of some financial problems. We've kept the property affordable, and we found a person who I think is truly interested in the, in the benefit to the current residents and is willing to work with them and with Halls to see if he can come up with a long-term solution. Because folks, the next bidder might agree to be affordable, but you know what those numbers can be. But it's going to be sold. That was the condition of the purchase. So that's not the question. The question, is this the best person we got? And I think we have an excellent person. I think his heart's in the right place. So let's get this thing done. Thank you.
Councilwoman Larson, did you have a comment?
Yes, I'd just like to echo that in a way that Rogers and Anderson clearly are passionate about protecting affordability of these units. I think there's been a lot of discussion over the years about gentrification and the loss of housing for a certain economic bracket of our population. And it's clear that we have a developer here who's willing to work with the city. The city intervened. We've talked about other places where the city's got involved to protect housing that otherwise would go to the marketplace rate. And we know what that means as far as displacement of individuals. So I would applaud one of the city's willingness to intervene in this particular case, but also appreciate the work of a developer who has a sympathy to understand that we have problems in the city providing quality housing for certain populations. So I'm going to vote in favor of this.
Thank you. Do you have a motion? Second, all those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? No?
No.
No.
See, three noes. The motion passes. Five in favor, three against. Thank you, Mayor Protim. All right, item G six.
Item G six, consideration of items related to Brushy Fork Stream Bank Restoration, including a resolution ratifying and authorizing an interlocal agreement with Forsyth County to provide funding to assist in the county's efforts to remediate and restore Brushy Fork Creek adjacent to Smith Reynolds Airport located in the Northeast Ward.
Mr. King?
Thank you, Mayor. So just to recap briefly, this is, this item, it authorizes an interlocal agreement with Forsyth County for the city's financial participation in the Brushy Fork Stream Bank Restoration Project. And as a reminder, that, that cap is $300,000 on the city's end to go with the $300,000 that the state, that the county got from the state in a grant. This item was briefed at Finance. I know there's a lot of discussion that took place there. I think there's some questions about ongoing maintenance. And we reached out to Deputy County Manager Damon Sanders Pratt. He provided a two-page written response. It was included in your agenda materials. It outlines how that would work from the county side as well, from the, from the resident side. So you've got that there. There was a 4O recommendation coming out of Finance Committee to approve this interlocal agreement. And Damon Sanders Pratt, Deputy County Manager, along with Airport Director Mark Davidson are here this evening as well. If there are any questions about this project.
I recall one of the key questions was how is this project going to be maintained in the future? And Mr. Pratt, I know you've consulted with the state and you have a plan. Councilwoman, would you like to hear Mr. Pratt?
Yes. I would. Thank you, Mayor.
Didn't mean to get in your business, Councilwoman Burke, but good afternoon or evening, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protim and council members. So Mark Davis and I did reach out to the Land and Water Fund staff about how the maintenance takes place after the remediation work is completed. So the county would have a deed restriction placed on our property that is impacted by the stream, which would allow us not to do certain things within the project boundaries. Likewise, the residents on their property, the property owners, would have a conservation easement, which would also put limitations on what they could do in that project area. And basically, the state representatives indicated that the deed restriction and the conservation easement were intended to protect their $300,000 investment, so neither the county nor the property owners would damage the remediation work. After a year, once that remediation work is established, that work should be able to handle the hydrology of the upstream impervious surface that flows into it. And so there really is nothing to do in it other than to not. other than to not damage the work that will be done as part of this project. In that first year, the contractor would come back just to make sure that the vegetation, the riprap and so forth are established and that the project's working as it should.
Thank you. I think, Councilmembers, you're familiar with the work that was done in Civitan Park, I believe. It's a really beautiful example of the protection of those stream banks. And now it's a beautiful area, very well maintained, and we really don't have to do anything to keep it going there. Questions to Mr. Pratt?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for that information. So you said after, one year after the remediation work has been completed, that there shouldn't be any additional work? What if there is? Who will be responsible?
So once it's established and it's working as it should, it's supposed to handle the hydrology that is north of that. Now, if there's a subsequent event, say a hurricane or something that's a new event, well, that would be a separate issue that we'd have to deal with whatever happens on our side, and they have to deal with what happens on their side. That would be a separate event. But for the hydrology that's impacting it right now today, based on the impervious surface north of that location, this work should withstand, basically, in perpetuity, once it establishes itself.
Okay, so we're using the word "should." It should withstand, be all right, other than some catastrophic event. Let's say, no event occurs, but the work does not hold up. Who will be responsible for the maintenance of the work?
So the Soil and Water Office in Forsyth County will inspect both our side and that side visually. If there is some damage to the integrity on our side that we caused by doing something, or on the private property owner's side that they caused by doing something, well, then we have to take whatever measures we do in our ordinance to get people to comply with repair work for some damage that maybe they caused. Or in our instance, we have to pay for what we caused. But the understanding is that after that first year, if the mediation work is as it should be, and what we've experienced is that when you have a problem with maybe grass catching, that we call the contractor back until they make sure that it's right. So, you know, we'll call you back within that year. If the remediation work has to take beyond that period of time for that same work, we'll still call them back to repair that. But once it's established, it should, you know, all things considered, withstand the hydrology events that exist today.
So with your contractor, there will be nothing in the contract that will hold them accountable for faulty work?
There will be a warranty, and that we will call them back if it doesn't establish within that year. And then if there's something that is faulty within that year, it can go beyond that year to fix it, but they have to fix the work that they were contracted to do.
Anything faulty after a year, who would be responsible for that? If anything shows up after a year, just faulty work, who will be responsible?
Well, if it's faulty work that's visible within the year, right, that we can see within the year, then they're responsible. If their work is not faulty and the year period ends, well, then say another five months later, something happens that's beyond the work that they did, they wouldn't be responsible for that. That would be a new event. So say, for example, if there was another, again, a large impervious surface project built north of that location that impacted the site, that's a separate occurrence that would be different than what this is intended to remediate.
Okay, so in our Finance Committee, this was, it was passed unanimously that the city would provide $300,000 to help with the soil erosion issue at this site. And I just hope that we all continue to vote like that tonight, and we'll provide $300,000. With the $300,000 grant from the county and with what the city will be contributing, is that enough to cover the cost for this remediation project?
So if it's not enough, the agreement with the county is that we would cover the overage, the 2,100 linear feet. That's in our interlocal agreement.
Okay, a couple more questions. Your letter said that you will be meeting with the residents to explain thoroughly to them what the plan is. And so do you have a date set already for that meeting?
So we don't have a date set for that meeting. You know, the airport staff, the county manager, the Yakima River Keeper, Neighbors for Better Neighborhoods, had a meeting with the impacted property owners in May. They gave them information about this project, as it was envisioned at the time. Then in June, they had their own community meeting based on some of that information. On December 7th, there was another meeting that the Airport Director attended, but this was the subject again. They've had some newsletters that come out every six months. The last two, this was a topic of those newsletters. So in the events that all the property owners sign off, and I think they may have by this time, so all the property owners have been contacted and have signed off that they want to participate. So if it's approved here, the board votes on Thursday to approve the engineer's contract. And so once that happens, then we can meet again with the community. But right now, that hadn't happened yet, so we haven't set up a meeting on the project because it hadn't been approved by them yet.
Okay, so when you meet with members of the community, will you meet with them individually? Because everybody's property damage is different, or will you meet with them collectively?
Well, we hadn't made a determination on that yet. Generally, we've done it collectively, but, you know, there'll be individual agreements that they have to sign. So it'll be an opportunity to speak to each of them individually.
Last question. Do you plan to send this letter out to the property owners prior to the meeting so that they may, if they choose, have legal counsel with them when they meet with you all?
So which letter? Sorry.
You sent a letter to the city. I'm looking at it now. I believe it was delivered to ACM Aaron King, that letter.
So I hadn't intended to send that, but I can. It's not, it's public record, I can send it to them.
Okay, okay, I think that would be great. Okay, give them a, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, Councilmember Monday?
Thank you for those explanations and clarifications. I still feel like we're, and I'm very much in favor of supporting these citizens. They have been asking for help for a long time. But I still feel like, to a certain degree, we're treating the symptoms instead of the cause. So what steps will the county be putting in place or the appropriate body be putting in place that we don't have something like this happen again? Because this was very much preventable.
So I know there are instances all over the county and probably in the city as well, where people are on, you know, water bodies, streams and creeks, and that over time, if there's not adequate vegetation, riprap, et cetera, you know, water will pull dirt, and it causes a problem all over. You know, in this instance, you know, we're able to remediate that work. We've done some work like this in Kernsville, Buffalo Creek. But it's a large problem a lot of places. Runoff from developments can be challenged, depends on how much and where. That's a tough question on where we stop it, like everywhere. I mean, that's a big issue.
Thank you. Councilmember Cipio had a comment or question?
Yes, I think this is a challenge just like the deterioration of bridges and roads that we don't take care of, but it happens over time. But this remediation program is basically putting back soil, putting back grasses, shrubs and stuff like that that's eroded on both sides of Brushy Fork. And I don't know if anyone has been able to answer my question. When we do this upstream for the Northwood Estates homes, would that impact positively the houses that are impacted on Brushy Fork Creek down near Skyland Park? Would that help that flow? Because it floods down by Evergreen Cemetery and at Skyland Park, those homes. And I just wondered if we know that, are we going to expect more erosion downstream? Or does this help fix part of the problems that we've been experiencing downstream for years?
Well, so Keith Huff was here at the last meeting, and he noted that it probably wouldn't have an impact that far downstream, but...
There comes the answer.
I'll tag team in for that one. Good evening, Mayor Joints, Mayor Pro Tim Adams, members of the council.
Good evening.
Yeah, Councilmember Cipio, as we discussed in committee, it's unlikely that one control that far up in the watershed would affect any real change on what we're calling Skyland Lake. I think their goal is to control the hydrology to allow their natural channel design for this 2,100 linear feet to stay intact, so to speak. So that would be their goal and objective. But I don't think we'd see any real tangible changes down that far low with Skyland Branch in that area like there.
Not positive, not negative?
It wouldn't exacerbate it, but I don't think you would see any changes. Skyland Lake would still be Skyland Lake in those large event spans, unfortunately.
Thank you. All right, this did come out of Finance Committee. If you want to get a motion on the floor...
Yeah, let me have a comment, and then I can make a motion. Really, to Mr. Monday, we have done something before you got here to solve the problem. We adopted some very strict stormwater maintenance requirements for new construction. My best example is the new, what is the building on Country Club? It's the, it's not the Shriners, it's one of those...
Medical?
It is the Shriners. It's Shriners, anyway. It backs up right to neighborhood, and we put in enough pipe to hold water forever there. Haven't gotten a call yet. We have done things proactively from that point forward. What we can't do and do not have the authority to do is correct past construction. And we have a problem, Mr. Monday, pretty much on every creek in this community that wash out because we added impervious surfaces for generations, and the water gets to the creek sooner. And we will deal with it one creek at a time. And I do know, for example, in Mr. McIntosh's, we did get a federal grant, I think, to work on, I don't know what creek it is, goes down Runnymede Road.
Runnymede.
Runnymede Creek. And I know you're doing some engineering work at this time. But it's a problem everywhere. We did address going forward, but that doesn't correct history. With that, this has been needed forever. This goes back to the prior Mrs. Burke that sat there. I enthusiastically make a motion that we approve this.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams, and a motion by Councilmember Clark. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? That is unanimous, thank you. All right, well, that's the extent of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor?
Close session?
No.
No, no, close session. No close session.
There, there's one cleanup item, if I may ask.
Okay, let's clean it up.
For items G1 and G2, just for the record, if you could close those public hearings.
All right, I hereby close items G1 and G, public hearings for G1 and G2. Thank you, Mr. Kanto. Now, we entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second. Motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams, and the second by Councilmember McIntosh to adjourn. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, we are adjourned.